It's Monday, Mr. Mo Kelly here, KFI AM 640, live everywhere in the iHeart Radio app. I gotta tell you, tonight's show is just gonna be straight up fire. I have so much to say. We have so much to cover. I'm gonna be right all night long. Y'all are gonna be wrong and mad at me all night long. I'm calling my shot. I am Babe Ruth, pointing out to the centerfield fence. Yeah, we're gonna talk about some Yankees and Juan Soto. We're gonna talk about the new California senator who was sworn in today, Adam Schiff, and that showdown which is going to happen on Capitol Hill. We have two new LA City Council members sworn in today. We'll talk about them and whether it will make any difference. And before we finish the hour, I'm going to let you know that, well, let me just, let me set it up right now. Mark Ronner, first, good evening. You would have loved, loved to have been a part of this conversation. You said you missed me on Twitter slash X. Well, I had an afternoon-long, almost all-day-long fight against some 7,500 people over child rearing.
Oh, yes.
About how I am of the opinion that, yes, I am A-OK with people spanking their kids. Some people don't know spanking is legal. Child abuse is not. I am A-OK with people spanking their kids. And let me just set this up now, so y'all can get mad at me now, so when we really get into the conversation, you'll know why you're mad at me.
Oh, tee it up, yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, when I went to Lake Forest for the Pasta-thon, and how, you know, we were getting ready for Pasta-thon, and there were a lot of listeners out there, and there was, every time I go out, or I even get on social media, someone wants to tell me my politics. They always wanna say, "Oh, my gosh, I listen to KFI. You're a liberal fresh air." What are you talking about? What are you talking about? I had a listener walk up to me and said, "Mo, I appreciate you being the liberal voice of reason." Okay, I'm not maga, but if you knew my politics and my beliefs across the wide expanse of issues, you would know I'm all over the damn place.
If someone calls you the Alan Colmes of KFI, punch him right in the face.
That's what it feels like. You know what I mean?
I do, exactly, yeah.
They say, "Oh, handle, he's so liberal," and Gary and Shannon, they try to play it right down the middle. I know where they are. And they go down the whole lineup, and they say, "But at least you, you know, we know where you stand." It's like, clearly, you don't. I'm not maga. But let me, and the reason I'm talking about this, when it comes to child rearing and child expectations, and how I would treat children, I can say definitively, with no exaggeration, I'm probably the most conservative person here on this station, bar none, when it comes to to child rearing and what do I expect of children, and how they should be treated. I'm not like The Handmaid's Tale. I'm not saying I want bibles in schools or anything like that. But when it comes to child rearing, yes, I am all for spanking children.
Spare the rod.
Spoil the child.
Yeah.
All of that. I will go deep on that. Had a long-ass argument with all you liberals out there. Talking about, "Oh, you can't touch the child. That's child abuse. How dare you. You can't raise a child without laying your hands on them?" Yes, I can. It's legal, and I advocate it. Because I'm tired, you know, I was gonna talk about this at the bottom of the hour, but I'm here now. I am tired of your badass kids. I am tired of your stink-ass kids and the smashing grabs, and you looting, and you going into the 7-Elevens, and your street takeovers. And every time I see a little 15, 16, 17-year-old kid involved in that, I said, "That's another motherfucker who never got his ass whooped growing up," because they never learned consequences, boundaries, parameters prior to that moment. They didn't know that there were consequences. They thought that they could do whatever they want, and they have been doing whatever they want. Have you been in a public school lately, how they talk to teachers? Have you heard them? I know Toala has. These kids talk however they want to teachers, or however they want to adults. And I wish, I wish a motherfucker would talk that way to me as a teacher. I wish. Cause I might go to jail.
You'd sit him right down and show him a copy of Two Sir With Love, and that'd be the end of it.
I will say this, I will say this, and this is a function of growing up in martial arts. It's the closest thing we have to what I would want in schools today. Everything is yes, sir, no, sir. If you wanna disagree, well, you can disagree on the other side of the mat doing 20 pushups, or you doing duck walks. There are consequences for you acting like an ass. You are a child. You're not an instructor. You don't have a say. You're given instructions. You follow instructions. Yeah, I'm being 100% serious about that. And we'll get into that at the bottom of the hour. I don't wanna give it all away. But I went ham on threads today, @MrMoKelly. You can see it there. I said what I said, and I meant what I said. If you don't like it, well, I got the microphone. I'm not gonna lose. I got electricity. I'm not going out of business anytime soon. But you know, if you've been really listening to the show, you might have noticed I have not talked about the alleged UHC, United Healthcare Shooter suspect. And I was very intentional. It was intentional because even though we live in a 24/7 news cycle, I feel I have a responsibility to not rush to cover everything. The guy was on the loose. We didn't know if it was the person. We didn't know any supposed motive. We don't, we didn't know whether, at least at that time, whether Brian Thompson, the CEO of United Healthcare, when he was gunned down, was it related to his business or his personal life? We knew nothing. And I would say, by and large, the news media, and I'm a part of the news media. I don't do news, but I'm a part of the news media. You listen to KFI. It's a news talk station. We have personalities, and we deal with the news, and you know, through our own lens. But I'm not delivering the news. And I think I have a responsibility to be responsible. And I wasn't going to speculate about who was the shooter, or why. You had all sorts of speculation about whether it was actually a guy, or whether it was a woman, whether it was having to do with healthcare, whether it had to do with some sort of affairs. I don't know. You don't have to do that. You don't have to have all the answers or speculate all the possible scenarios from day one through day five. You can say we're monitoring, we're watching it, we're aware, and when we have someone in custody, we'll know more. We can go from there. Now there's someone in custody. Now there's even an alleged manifesto. Now we have some actual information which is corroborated by evidence, which would suggest some sort of motive, that this guy with ties to California, ties to Santa Monica and Stanford, Luigi Mangione, 26 years old, did this, possibly, you still allege, because of his hatred of the healthcare system. My words. He's angry at the healthcare system. And he said he had to do this, paraphrasing in so many words. And we'll know more about him. We will know whether he developed these views while he was at Stanford, whether he was, you know, when he was working elsewhere, whether he was radicalized by some outside influence when he was working at TrueCar. Full disclosure, I used to endorse TrueCar. We don't know. We are going to find out in the next few days. We don't have to put all the dots together just because he's now in custody. They are combing law enforcement. They are combing his social media. They are talking to his neighbors. They're talking to his family. We'll know more probably at the next press conference. And they're still not gonna tell us everything because they're building a case against him. They're gonna charge him on probably some weapons charge. Not charging with murder yet because they're still building the case. And that's probably what you're wondering. Why haven't they charged him with murder? Because their case is not strong enough yet. They have not placed him at the scene. They have not placed him at the scene with the weapon. There may be some other information which ties him directly to Brian Thompson. It may have been an email exchange. We'll hear about all that in the coming days. That's why I did not say anything about Brian Thompson and Luigi until today. Now we can talk about it. Now we can talk about something that's tangible, something that's real. Now we know that this guy, most likely, probably, maybe, was the one who did it, and why. And did you watch what was happening on social media? Oh, my goodness. The amount of people who were condoning murder? They're saying, "Eh, I'm okay with this murder. If someone needs to die, let it be one of those healthcare CEOs. I'm not mad." In fact, there were actual stories about how internet sleuths were refusing to help. That's a sick society in which we live in, and it's absolutely sick. I don't care whether you hate healthcare or you hate the healthcare providers. If you hate the whole healthcare system that we have, in fact, I do. I do. Doesn't mean I want anyone killed. Doesn't mean I want someone murdered. And regardless of whether I agree with the person or disagree with the person, that's still someone's father, someone's son, someone's brother. Somebody loved him. Someone cared about him. Someone is grieving right now. The last thing I would want is that person murdered. I don't care who that is. You can put anyone in that blank. I don't wish murder on anyone. But I think the murder of Brian Thompson said far more about us than the guy they have in custody.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM 640.
Adam Schiff, like him or loathe him, he is now the junior senator for the state of California. So he's going back to Washington, and you're wondering probably, will he be the foil, in a congressional sense, to Donald Trump? Yes and no. Yes and no. And I talked about this on Spectrum today as part of my weekly segment, Mo Kelly Mondays. He will be a part of the loyal opposition, as they call it. He'll be a part of the Democratic Party and any resistance, small r, to the sitting president and his party. That's not any different than any other time in history. It's not special in any way. But I will say that there will come a time in which Adam Schiff and President-elect Donald Trump, he will be president eventually, will butt heads. They will come to some sort of entanglement in a political sense. Why? Because Adam Schiff, as he is part of the loyal opposition, he will probably be part, he'll probably be one of the louder voices of the loyal opposition. One, because he's a senator from California. And Governor Newsom and other California politicians have made a very clear claim as far as how California is going to play a role in either putting an obstacle in front of President Trump, future President Trump, or somehow being the antithesis to whatever Donald Trump wants to do. So there will be some sort of fight along the way eventually. But I don't think Adam Schiff as a senator is going to be the same he was as a congressman. He's not gonna lead any impeachment proceeding, but he will be a louder voice. One, because he's just a junior senator. And if you know how politics works, and you know how seniority works, he has none. So it's not like he's gonna be placed on the committees where he will have any influence. One, the Democrats will be the minority party, so they will not have any chairs of any committees. And also, he will have no seniority, so he's not gonna be placed on, let's say, an intelligence committee. He's not gonna be placed on any of the powerful committees like the Armed Services Committee. He probably won't have any meaningful committee assignments, and he won't have any stature on those committees. So his relevance and power will be limited at best. I expect Adam Schiff to hold, keep his powder dry, as they say, for maybe the next year or so. Because there're gonna be plenty of things, if you want to be the opposition to Donald Trump, plenty of things and opportunities to do that. It, yes, Donald Trump will probably pardon the January 6 contingent. He probably will. He probably will place people in place like Cash Patel, who will investigate Donald Trump's enemies, yes. But don't expect Adam Schiff to be leading the way on anything, especially not in the early going. You would have to probably look elsewhere. There will be other opportunities, if you support the Democrats, to somehow mint amounts of defense against anything that Donald Trump is doing. But Adam Schiff was sworn in today, and today is real early in the process, but I wouldn't expect any fireworks for at least a year or so. Could be wrong. It's not often, but could be wrong. But I wouldn't expect anything in the near future, because the Democrats with no real power have to be judicious in how they use their social capital, when they're going to try to come together as a party and line up against, let's say, a nominee. Or let's say they're trying to stop a policy, and they want to sway a couple of Democratic senators, excuse me, Republican senators. Then you may see Adam Schiff step more to the forefront. But as far as seniority goes, no, no, no. You won't be seeing as much of him as you have in previous years. More locally, a lot of discussion about the LA City Council getting not one, but two new members, Isabel Jurado and Adrian Nazarian. Also, both of them were sworn in today, and they are representing the 2nd and 14th districts respectively. And something that I was asked on Spectrum today is, like, does this matter? Does this mean anything? What do you make of it? And I said, "You know what? Not a lot." And here's why. Here's why. Now, I'm quite sure the people in their districts who voted for them are happy that the person that they voted for won, but here's the truth. You know, when you talk about the LA City Council, you can talk about Jose Huesard, you can talk about Mitch Englander, you can talk about Mark Ridley Thomas, you can talk about Karen Price. Just because you have a different city council member, it doesn't mean the LA City Council is any different. It doesn't mean that someone else isn't going to get indicted next week. It doesn't mean that just because Kevin DeLeon is gone, it doesn't mean that there won't be some other scandal enveloping the whole city council in the coming weeks, months, or years. It doesn't mean that. It just means we have two new city council members. And how do I know this? Because once upon a time, Jose Huesard was a new city council member, and Mitch Englander was a new city council member. And they, and they had the same charts. They were gonna, you know, gonna put a different face on City Hall. They were going to clean up what was happening on the LA City Council. They were gonna make sure that the body would be more respected. And then, you know, you get someone like Mark Ridley Thomas, who came from LA politics. He was a former LA County Supervisor, and he was well-respected in various communities. And then we saw how all that turned out. And that's still being adjudicated. I mean, he was convicted, but he's trying to get a, you know, his conviction overturned, pending appeal. So what happens with the LA City Council? I can't tell you. Is there another investigation going on that we just don't know about? Probably. Probably. Because after so many investigations of LA City Hall, it probably spiraled into other investigations, and you won't know. Because usually when there are federal investigations, in fact, always when there are federal investigations, you won't know unless an indictment is being brought against a member or multiple members. They're investigated all the time, and we, the general public, won't know, because I know this from sitting on a federal grand jury, if no true bill is reached, no indictment is reached, then the investigation goes away, and they don't make a public announcement. Yeah, we investigated the city council members, and we didn't come up with enough or anything which was prosecutable, or enough evidence where they could secure a conviction. We won't know. But the only thing I would bet on is that there are multiple investigations even still, even still. So the LA City Council may not be out of the woods. We may not know what lies beneath. So my takeaway is this. Yes, we have two new LA City Council members for the 2nd and 14th districts. No, I have, I, no, I have no idea whether that will change anything, whether that mean that there will be better governance, whether that will be a better partnership with the mayor, Karen Bass. I have no idea whether that means that our city will be more efficient. It just means we have two new people.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM 640.
And yes, I am a firm supporter of corporal punishment. Spankings are legal here in California. Child abuse is not. If you conflate the two or assume that they are the same, then you're just being dishonest. I don't care about your feelings. I'm only talking about the facts, okay? If you consider spanking the same as, I don't know, punching a child in the throat or uppercutting them to their gut, well, you're just being dishonest. I'm not talking about that. But here's what started on Threads, @MrMoKelly on Threads, M-R-M-O-K-E-L-L-Y. And this is reminiscent of some of the battles that I got into with people on Twitter that Mark Ronner says he loves so much. Well, got a good dose of it today on Threads. There was a post by this person named Rihanna Nal Paul or something, and her post was unpopular opinion, beating your kids is domestic violence. I don't know how that's unpopular, but yes, if you're beating your kids, yes, that would be a form of domestic violence. I don't think anyone would really disagree with that. But my response had a little bit more nuance in it, and to the point, I said, quote, "I am A-OK with spanking, spanking, and always will be. Anyone who disagrees is welcome to raise their kids however they want." But here's what I firmly believe. The children are not to be rationalized with as they are emotionally incapable of fully understanding the world. They are to be taught consequences and boundaries before the world does, in the form of prison and/or the morgue. And we wonder why kids are out of control today with no respect for people, police, or boundaries. Stay out of my house. Close quote. Y'all can be mad. Y'all can be angry. Y'all can be emotional. You can be irrational. But I was raised in a house in which you didn't talk back. You did not have an opinion. You didn't have, didn't have a discussion or a debate with an adult. I'll give you an example. My mother told me, maybe when I was maybe four years old, it was around four or five. She told me, "Do not run in the street." Okay? It wasn't about a conversation about the dangers of a car careening around the corner, which may run you down, and you may not be able to see the car, or the car may not be able to see you because of your low stature, which may be below the horizon of the driver's dashboard. It wasn't that. It was stay your ass out of the street, or you're gonna get a butt whooping. And I got maybe five or six or so, because I remember we had just moved into the house that my mother lives in to this day, and it was light outside. I think it was in the summer. I had a little time to myself unsupervised. For some reason, they probably call my mother a bad mother today. And I looked left and looked right, and I didn't see any cars coming. My ball had gone in the street. Why would I not chase after my ball? I didn't know my mother was watching me from the window. And then I ran out into the street, got my ball, got back. Everything was fine. No cars came around the corner. My mother tore out the house and tore my ass up. Why? Because I disobeyed her. It wasn't about whether I could make a case and debate about whether I was mature enough to go out into the street. She didn't have time to try to explain to me how I put myself in danger, could have gotten myself killed, because a car often came around that corner because it was a blind corner, way too fast, and wouldn't have been able to stop if I happened to be out there. She gave me an order. She gave me a directive. It was not a topic for discussion. And since I disobeyed that order, she whooped my ass. Why? Because she knew, as a young child, I could better understand wanting to avoid the whooping, as opposed to understanding the fullness of the danger of a car coming around the corner. And my parents, both of them, understood it was okay for me to fear them, a healthy fear, healthy fear. Because my healthy fear of them was carried with me when I went to school. It carried with me, so I didn't, there was a limit to the things I would do out there, because I couldn't fundamentally understand what it would mean to get arrested or go to juvie, or do something that was so stupid that it might get me killed. And I'll give you something else. And there's a cultural difference here I want to drill down on. It's culturally different for many African-American families and many non-black families, especially in the 1970s. I was growing up with a parent, my father, who grew up in segregated Virginia. My mother, less so, in integrated Detroit. But my father was very conscious of making sure I didn't put myself in a situation where I would have been treated differently, and I would have lost control of my own autonomy. I had a gun pulled on me by a police officer when I was 13 years old. I don't know how many people listening can say the same. And they were trying to protect me from a world which may have seen me and reacted to me differently. The foolishness that you see going on now, I definitely could not have participated in back then. Why? Because I probably would have been shot. And my parents didn't have time nor the inclination to explain all the possible scenarios of how I could have done something and then put in a situation where I would have lost my freedom or lost my life. And it was easier for them to say, "If you do this, I'm gonna whoop your ass." And many times, they did. And because they did, they protected me from prison, and they protected me from the morgue. And if they didn't, I promise you, I would have been one of them out there smashing and grabbing. I promise you, I would have been one of them out there doing a street takeover. I would have been doing all the things that you supposedly can't stand and complain about on social media. You're probably some of the same people who are reposting and resharing that little girl who was acting up and losing her damn mind in a grocery store. You know why that never happened with me? Because I knew my parents would beat my ass if I did. And they did for less. Not because they were abusing me, but they were protecting me. Because when the police weren't around, I knew that my parents were watching, or my neighbors were watching. And if I acted up in front of my neighbors, my neighbors would tell my parents, and they would still have consequences waiting for me. The reason I'm talking about this, I am so tired of this permissive society. And I talked in the first segment about how I would say, as far as child rearing goes, I'm probably the most conservative person on this station, bar none. Cause I have these conversations with the other hosts, and I know where they stand on certain things. Certain things are just not gonna fly with me. Ever, ever. The reason I wear an undershirt to this day and wear a belt is because my parents drilled it into me. Right now, I'm wearing a white undershirt, and I'm wearing a belt because there was expectations as far as how I was gonna carry myself outside the house, so I would not be mistaken for a hoodlum, for a thug, or someone who might be engaging in criminal behavior. These are all the things, talking about the cultural differences that African-Americans often have to worry about, or also have to instill in kids that other parents do not. It's a different ballgame. So if you don't spank your kids, God bless you. I hope they turn out to be wonderful. I hope they're great. I hope they're very respectful. I hope they're quiet in class. I hope they don't smash and grab. I hope they don't rob anyone. I hope they don't get involved in a knockout game. But that doesn't work for all of them. And I go to grocery stores, and I see these kids cussing out their parents. Don't tell me I'm the only one who sees this. I see these kids yelling at their parents, calling them all names in the book. "Come here, Timmy." "No. F you. No. Come here. No. I don't wanna." The first "mmm" I would have gotten out of my mouth, my mother would have slapped the taste out of my mouth. "Oh, that's child abuse." But you're the same, folks, complaining about what you don't like, what you see. And you say, "We need to have tougher laws." No, we need to have more discipline. Because you can't instill discipline by the time they get to be 14 or 15. It has to be four or five. I can tell you about some of the butt whoopings I got 50 years ago, which stay with me today, and tell me and remind me why I'm not supposed to do certain things. Why my ass is not supposed to be in certain places after certain hours? Because not only did it protect me as a child, it protects me as a grown-ass man. Discipline. We don't wanna talk about discipline, because spanking is violent. It's child abuse. I'll remember that the next time you complain about someone breaking in your house. I got more. I got more to say. It's later on, Mo Kelly, KFI AM 640, live everywhere in the iHeart Radio app.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM 640.
I'm not done. I got more to say. I got more to say about your badass kids. I'm tired of them. Tired of hearing them. I'm tired of looking at them. I'm tired of them talking back to you. You don't understand. I mean, this is not an act. This is sincere. I see these kids talking back. I see these kids calling their parents by their first name. I, it's really strange. It's really strange. And whenever my blended sons, whenever they would go out, I told them, "There's a certain way you can, and there's a certain way you cannot dress. There's a certain way you can address adults. There's a certain way you cannot address adults." When you come up here, if you're gonna be representing me, you're gonna be in a collared shirt. You're not coming up here in a t-shirt, in shorts. Why? Because you're gonna present yourself a certain way. And when you get to be an adult, then you can do whatever you want. But until that time, you can do it my way. That's the way it is. That's the way I was raised. You won't find me, by and large, in a t-shirt. Not at work. Not at work. Because that's the way I carry myself. It is something that was passed down to me, and it will always stay with me. I'm a strict adherent to discipline. Now, I can't beat the kids, can't spank the kids in martial arts, but I can make them do 20 pushups. I can make them do duck walks. I can make them do bear crawls all around the mat. There has to be some sort of consequences that we have for kids. I don't believe in reasoning with children because they're not responsible for anything. They're not emotionally developed enough to make any life decisions. I'll give you a perfect example. Here we go, Toala, Mr. Liberal, Mo Kelly. I am firmly against kids, whether they are trans or not, changing their name or their pronouns while they are minors. They can't legally change their name until they're 18. So if you're, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful or funny, but if you're 12 or 13, and you wanna change your name from Tom to Tina, I got a problem with that. I got a problem with that and I don't support that. Because you're not older, you're not even past puberty. And you want to make some life decision and me as the adult, I'm supposed to respond to that? It's like being in love with someone. You're in love with someone this week, it may be someone next week. Now, you may go through the change and you may adhere to it for the rest of your life. God bless you. And I mean that sincerely. God bless you. But as a child, there's certain decisions you just don't get to make. You don't. Why? Because you're not responsible for anything that you do. And I am not subject to the whims of a child. And Twala, you said it and I gotta give you credit for it. We live in this society where we have, everyone's getting a damn participation trophy. No one wants to see a child cry ever because, you know, it's unfair. It's unfair. F fair. Fair is for five-year-olds, I think you said.
Yeah, fair is for five-year-olds, fair is for children. And I cannot stand the leniency upon which a lot of parents ascribe to their children. Parents ascribing almost adulthood to the children is quite possibly one of my most pet of peas. It is so annoying when I see it happen, when I see the disrespect. And it's interesting because my mother took my children with her to an event. Actually, they went to a couple of different places this weekend. And when she came back, she remarked, oh my goodness, the kids are so good. They are so sweet. They're so kind. They're just quiet. They're just so polite, just kind.
I know this is going.
And, and, you know, I said, well, thank you very much. And, and it's because I know for a fact that my children have seen both me and their mother go left in public, not when we got home, not later, in that moment.
Just like my house. If you mess up in public, you get your butt beaten public.
In public. And they have seen how quickly we can go from zero to 60 while they were younger so that now they know better. They know better and not out of fear. We have taught a healthy, healthy sense of respect by way of putting pause on them.
You can't do that. This is child abuse. You, you should never have to use violence to raise your children. You're a bad parent. You're a bad parent. I'm calling Child Protective Services on you.
And you know what? And you and your child can get a trophy for losing. You losers. You are losers and that is a loser mentality.
There's something else.